I'd call to order the July 14th, 2021 public meeting of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. My name is David Weiner. I'm the Chair. And very nice to see everybody back in here in smiling faces. Um, I'd like to start off, Mr. Costin's going to lead us in prayer, and Mr. Horsley will lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Eternal God our Father, we thank you for this glorious day. We thank you, God, for your many tender mercies and benefits. God, we ask today as we come to discuss the business of this city, God, that you would look on us and bless us with your wisdom and your understanding. God, guide us into each and every decision. Let it be for the benefit of those we serve. God, we ask that you would continue to have favor on us and bless us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge?
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Mr. Redmond has volunteered to introduce the members.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. I'm going to start on that side of the dais over there. That pretty lady on the end is Kay Wilson. She is a deputy city attorney, I think I got the title right, who is in charge of land use matters and is here every month helping us in our jobs. Next to her is Mr. John Costin. John's a retired fire captain who represents the Centreville District. No?
At large.
What's that?
At large.
Why do I keep making that mistake with you? Okay, at large. And he represents the city at large. Next to him is Robin Klein. Robin is a social worker. So she has a busy day. Next to Robin is George Alcaraz. George represents the Beach District. He is a contractor. He's a restaurant owner. He does, he's an events promoter. He does a whole bunch of things. I can't keep up. I can't keep up with Dee either. She's got like five different jobs. Dee Oliver serves at large. She was most recently our chairman, vice chairman before that. And gosh, you don't have a lot of time left.
Thanks.
Yeah, no.
Here.
I'm not that old.
You start, no, no, not that. I wouldn't know what I meant. You start getting sad this time of year when people start to get towards the end of their terms. Anyway, she's very capable and we're glad to have her. Of course, next to her is Don Horsley. He is a farmer. He is all things Princess Anne District, but he serves at large. In the middle there is Mr. Weiner. David Weiner is our chairman. He represents the Kempsville District. And he is a commercial salesman in the building industry. Normally, next to him would be Jack Wall. Jack's not here today. Jack is our vice chairman, and he's an engineer who represents the Rose Hall District. This is Michael Enman. He is an attorney, really good attorney. He also serves at large. My name's Dave Redmond. I represent the Bayside District. I'm a commercial real estate broker. Whitney Graham is not here today. He, I don't know where's Whitney. He's probably on vacation. It's a vacation time of year. He represents the Lynn Haven District, and then we have one member who recently resigned, which is why we have an open seat here. And that is Mr. Bobby Tahan. He is the planning director, and he's going to share some of his staff names and personalities with you. Mr. Tahan?
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. Clerking today, we have Nicole Garrido and Pam Sandley. Also assisting with clerking is Lynn Ronker. As far as planning staff, the rest of the planning staff, we do have Carolyn Smith, the planning administrator, Wadaw and Marshall Coleman with our planning, current planning group and planning administration, as well as Hank Morrison and Ashby Moss from our zoning division. For those that aren't aware, Ashby is the acting zoning administrator now, as Kevin Kemp has moved on to other things. So we also have Tori Eisenberg, who's with the city attorney's office that always assists us as well. Whitney McNamara, planner in our environmental section. Our interns that we have, Grace Pollan and Matty Loman, and our city traffic engineer, Rick Loman, and Don Perron with Public Utilities as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tahan. And I will add, by the way, because I have to, the two interns gave presentations this morning in our informal session. They both did, I thought, a terrific job. So I hope you were enjoying yourself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next, Madam Clerk, would you like to introduce the rules and how the meeting's going to go today, please?
Sure. Today, we will have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first, whether they are in person or via WebEx. Following the applicant or their representative, in-person speakers will be called next, and then the speakers participating via WebEx. For WebEx speakers, please wait two to three seconds to begin to ensure the commission hears your complete remarks. Please note, if the speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, we will move on to the next speaker or the next order of business. Now, I will read the public hearing rules. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It's equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. The commission requests that if you have a cell phone, please either silence it or turn it off. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission agenda. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is the deferral items. If you have an item to be deferred, please come forward. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Lisa Murphy, local zoning attorney, and I'm here requesting that you defer items 14, 15, 16, and 17. The street closure and conditional change in zoning for the Marlin Bay project.
And that's for 60 days?
For 60 days, yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
To be clear, that is to the September public hearings.
September, okay. Mr. Don, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Wakefield Development, case number seven, for an indefinite deferral, but hope we see you as early as next month. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. Any other items? The Chair has been told items 27, or 28, 29, and 30 also are indefinite deferral. And Madam Clerk, do we still have a speaker on item 17?
Yes, we do.
So we're going to let him to come forward now?
Daniel Murphy?
What number did? Seventeen.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. I really appreciate it.
Please state your name for the record, please.
My name is Daniel Murphy. I am the president of the Ocean Park Civic League. I am in favor of the deferral today for the Marlin Bay project. I would just ask that there be a little bit better communication on deferrals. We had a number of residents who were very concerned about the meeting and would like to provide input during the September meeting. So if Mr. Tahan and his staff could ensure that letters go out properly and it's publicized, I would appreciate the notices. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
To clarify, Mr. Weiner, the action of the deferral has to be taken by the Planning Commission, so there's no mailing that we do in between those, but we do our best to notify the public the best way we can, especially if they've contacted us. So we will continue to keep open that line of communication.
Thank you. I just, there was a lot of some people.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion?
I have a motion to defer items 7, 14, 15, 16, 17, 28, 29, and 30.
Motion by Mrs. Oliver, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Horsley.
Vote is open. By recorded vote of eight in favor and zero against, agenda items seven have been deferred indefinitely. 14, 15, 16, and 17 have been deferred to the September meeting. 28, 29, and 30 have been deferred indefinitely.
Thank you. Next, there are withdrawals. Any items to be withdrawn? Please come forward. The Chair is aware of items 24, 26, and 27 to be withdrawn. Can I have a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion for item 24 and 26 and 27 to be withdrawn.
Have a motion, come second.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Oliver, second by Mrs. Klein.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Redmond and Mr. Enman?
Guys, can you move?
What?
Dave?
Mr. Redmond.
Yes.
Get your vote, please.
No, I will not. I'm going to abstain on this. I have a letter on file with the city attorney's office. I abstain. One of these is an STR application. I routinely abstain on all STR applications for reasons which I've already stated and which are on file with the city attorney's office. Sorry.
By recorded vote of seven in favor, zero against, and one abstention, agenda items 24, 26, and 27 have been withdrawn.
Thank you. Next order of business is the consent agenda, and our vice chair, Mrs. Oliver, will take over.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Today, we have 12 items on the consent agenda. First item is item number one, and city, our city attorney Kay Wilson is going to talk about this ordinance for us.
This is an ordinance to amend Section 242.1 of the zoning ordinance in regard to tattoo parlors and body piercing establishments. At this time, there is a requirement that they be located 600 feet away from another tattoo parlor or body piercing establishment. We will be deleting that requirement so that they may be closer together. We've had an influx of what are called personal makeup, and that is still considered tattooing even though it's done in a lot of beauty parlors. So that's why we feel it's appropriate to get rid of the 600 feet distance.
Great. Thank you. The next item is item number two and three, which is the Virginia Beach Development Authority is the applicant, Virginia Beach Development Authority and Lynn Lynn LLC. It's a modification of proffers. The address is 1941 General Booth Boulevard in portion of the corporate landing park in the Princess Anne District. Is there a representative for this item?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Oliver. I'm John Richardson. I represent the applicant. We're happy to answer any questions. We understood it was on consent.
Wait.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any opposition to this being on the consent agenda today? All right, hearing none. Commissioner Horsley has been asked to read this into the record for us.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. A portion of the property known as Dr. Johnny's Appliances was rezoned in 1994 from AG2 to B2 community business. Now, the corporate landing which backs up to this property is, this request is including to modify the conditional rezoning agreement associated with corporate landing to remove .73 acres from the business park, which is the corporate landing business park, to Dr. Johnny's to expand the, to expand his operation, build a warehouse. And the addition of the warehouse is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the, I think, the change of ownership from the industrial authority to the appliance business is totally exactly what this is all about when they established the commercial business park. So there was no opposition to this taking place. I think it's a good community business that's taking place down there, and no opposition to it, and staff agreed to it. We put it, placed it on a consent agenda.
Great, thank you. The next item is item number five. Is there a representative for this?
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. Members of the commission, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing the Sneed's. Appreciate being on the consent agenda. All four conditions recommended by staff are acceptable to my clients.
Great. Thank you. Any opposition to this being on the consent agenda today? Great, thank you. This is an application for Mr. and Mrs. Sneed on a street closure, which is a seven and a half foot?
You have to read that in the record.
Oh, I will.
Okay.
By 50-foot portion of the unimproved alley adjacent to 828 Vanderbilt in the Beach District. And Mr. Alcaraz is going to read this into the record for us.
All right, thank you. Again, this is a application for a street closure from Mr. Martin Sneed and Ms. Linda P. Sneed, and they are requesting a closure of portion of the platted unnamed and unimproved alley that is adjacent to the rear lot line. As shown on the submitted street closure exhibit in the plan, in the report, the proposal includes closure of half of the 15-foot wide alley totaling 375 square feet and incorporating the land into the adjacent residential lot identified as Lot 3, Block 14, Crowtan Beach. And with the staff recommended conditions, the Planning Commission has put it on consent agenda for approval.
The next item on our agenda is item number six, K A B D Development LLC, located at corner of Fisher Arch and Princess Anne Road for an eating and drinking establishment. Is there an applicant, representative for this application here today? Is there any opposition to this being on the consent agenda today? Hearing none. Commissioner Horsley is going to read this into the record, please.
No appearance means that they will have to accept the conditions that we proposed today. But the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for eating and drinking establishment located on some O2 office in O2 Office District. There's a requirement that the eating and drinking establishment cannot occupy more than 10% of the floor area, which this doesn't. It's a health-based eating establishment, and they kind of coexist with the health activities that take on, take place there in that office building. So there was no opposition. Staff seemed to think it was all right, and we do also, so we placed it on a consent agenda. So this means the conditions will be approved also.
Great, thank you. The next item is item eight, which is the Elias Properties of Virginia Beach Independence LLC. Hi, how are you?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. For the record, my name is Rob Beaman, local land use attorney with the Troutman Pepper Law Firm here today on behalf of the applicant. We've had a chance to read the conditions. They're acceptable, and we appreciate being on the consent agenda. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Is there any opposition for this being on the consent agenda today? Hearing none. Commissioner Klein is going to read this into the record for us.
The applicant proposes to rezone a 2.17 acre parcel from B1 Neighborhood Business District, excuse me, to conditional B2 Community Business District in order to operate a commercial retail store in the vacant building on the site. The property was rezoned from PDH2 to conditional B1 back in 1995 for a pharmacy. In order to operate a general retail space, it needs a rezoning to B2. It was previously a Rite Aid that was developed in 1997. It has since been vacant since 2005. The applicant is proposing a Dollar Tree in the space, and no major structural changes are proposed. Based on the application and the considerations, the staff recommends approval of this request, subject to the proffers, and the commission agrees.
Great, thank you. The next item is item number 12, Witch Duck Medical Associations LLC, located at 4501 North Witch Duck Road in the Bayside District.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing medical, Witch Duck Medical Associates LLC, conditional rezoning, all the proffers are our proffers. We appreciate being on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any opposition to this being on the consent agenda today? Hearing none. Commissioner Redmond is going to read this into the record for us.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. This is a conditional rezoning from A12 Apartment District to conditional O1 Office District. This is in the Bayside District, very near what we used to call Bayside Hospital. I guess we call it now Centerra Bayside Facility of some sort. This building has been here for 46 years. This is a housekeeping matter. You know, it's an office building in an A12 Apartment District. None of the offices will change. They are adding a fence to better screen the property. There is no opposition to this request. The zoning much better matches the, you know, the real use that occurs on this. And the commission therefore places it on consent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number 13, designed by Ilani and Corporate. It's a change of nonconformity located at 2416 Seaview Avenue in the Bayside District. Hello.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, for the record, Billy Garrington on behalf of the applicant, designs by Ilani for this nonconforming change of use. There are two conditions in the staff write-up, and we're in total agreement with those two conditions. Thank you very much for considering this on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda today? Hearing none. Commissioner Enman is going to read this into the record.
Yes, this is a change in nonconformity, kind of unusual application. The existing land use is R10 on the Shore Drive overlay. The applicant seeking this change in order to redevelop the existing 1,455 square foot nonconforming duplex with a taller and larger 2,500 square foot duplex. There is a request to allow the nonconforming structure to be enlarged, extended, reconstructed by resolution of the city council. The elevations of the three-story structure depict a coastal-inspired architecture with architectural roof shingles, hardy point lap siding, and black metal roof. So the stance analysis is that this is a replacement, and it's acceptable. The increase is lot coverage from 1,400 to 2,500 square feet. The, in addition, on-site parking is not provided for the duplex, but now the residents of this parcel are parking within the right-of-way. So this development will correct that problem. So the redevelopment of the property will result in a replacement of an aging structure as no historical significance with an attractive structure designed with coastal theme. Based on these considerations, staff recommended approval. We decided to put it on the consent agenda.
You're welcome.
The next item on our agenda is item 18, Atlantic Park Inc. and City of Virginia Beach Development Authority, located in the Beach District for a street closure. Is this an applicant representative for this?
Yes, ma'am. Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Mike Callpepper. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Atlantic Park Inc., and we accept all the conditions to the application.
Great, thank you. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda today? Hearing none. Commissioner Alcaraz is going to read this into the record.
All right, thank you. The applicant, Atlantic Park Inc. and City of Virginia Beach Development Authority, is requesting a street closure north side of 18th Street between Pacific and Arctic Avenue. They are requesting to close a portion of 18th Street to be incorporated with an assemblage of property owned by the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority. This assemblage, which has been referred to as the dome site, consists of two blocks between 18th and 20th Streets and Pacific and Arctic Avenues, and the block between 19th and 20th Streets and Arctic and Baltic Avenue. Similar to the previously approved closures for 20th Street and Arctic Avenue, the proposed street closure for 18th Street includes an area to be fully closed above and below ground, where proposed buildings overlap on the right-of-way and subject closure underground only. Beyond that, to accommodate the underground foundation and pilings. The ground and air above the subject closure will remain public right-of-way. Based on the application, the Planning Commission has recommended for consent agenda.
Great, thank you. The next item is item number 19, Atlantic Park Inc. and City of Virginia Beach Development Authority. It's an alternative compliance at address 1880 and 1811 Pacific Avenue, 319 and 18th Street. Is there a representative for this?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again, Mike Callpepper with Atlantic Park Inc., and we agree with the conditions set forth in the conditional street.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the agenda today, consent agenda? Hearing none. Commissioner Alcaraz is going to read this into the record, please.
All right, bear with me.
Sure.
The applicant, Atlantic Park Inc., is requesting an alternative compliance for maximum building height, building setbacks, and several conditional uses. The Atlantic Park Development proposal consists of two mixed-use buildings and residential, commercial, structured parking, and an indoor-outdoor entertainment venue with an outdoor surf park. Additional retail and mechanical buildings surround the park also. The development project is anticipated to house a variety of uses, some of which ordinarily require a conditional use permit. These include an outdoor recreational facility, the surf park, open-air markets like food trucks, farmers' markets, et cetera, assembly for indoor component entertainment venues, and reoccurring outdoor special events for outdoor components and entertainment venue with outdoor, with other outdoor events. While the full range of commercial uses has not been finalized and will likely vary over time, additional anticipated conditional uses include bars, nightclubs, craft breweries, distilleries, and wineries will come forth. The request of the alternative compliance includes the uses listed above with deviations from form requirements as described below. The applicant is seeking alternative compliance to exceed the 75-foot maximum limit on the south half of the back and 45-foot height on the north half. In addition, the applicant proposes encroaching into the five-foot minimum building setback on this block. As proposed, the building is placed on the property along the 20th Street and Arctic Avenue, resulting in a zero-foot setback instead of their standard five-foot setback. At the north block, similar to the northwest block, the applicant is seeking alternative compliance to exceed the 75-foot maximum height limit on the south half of the block and 45-foot height limit on the north half. The proposed building is approximately 85, 84 feet from the grade on the north side and steps down to a height on the south side. As with the northwest block, the applicant proposes to place the building on the property according, encroaching into the required five-foot building setback on 20th and Arctic. At the surf block, the applicant is seeking alternative compliance to construct a one-story commercial building type for beach, I'm sorry, on two beach frontage types. I missed that. 18th Street and Arctic Avenue, frontage sites. So having said that, in addition, the applicant proposes to place the mechanical building on the property, encroaching into the required five-foot setback on 18th Street. With those conditions stated, Planning Commission has recommended approval for consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item is, on our agenda is item number 20, Wesley D. Boyd, Capital Finance Inc. It's a modification of conditions at 172 South Plaza Trail Suite E in the Beach District. Is there a representative for this today? Is there any opposition for this being on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Commissioner Alcaraz is going to read this one in to the record.
I was hoping to read that one.
Did you have this?
No.
[laughing]
I'm ready for that one.
You're not?
No.
[laughing]
I'm still recuperating from that last one.
Hold on.
[laughing]
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
The applicant Wesley Boyd is-
Go ahead.
-a modification of condition for a tattoo parlor. The applicant is requesting to modify the conditions of a previously approved conditional use permit to expand a tattoo parlor located in the shopping center at the southeast corner of South Plaza Trail and Daytona Drive. The applicant received a conditional use permit in July two thousand and nineteen to operate a tattoo parlor in Suite E of the shopping center. The adjacent Suite F is now vacant, and the applicant proposes to modify the conditions to allow operation of the tattoo parlor in both suites. The operation will be between ten a.m. and nine p.m. seven days a week. No exterior changes of the proposed building will be affected, and Planning Commission has recommended approval for consent.
Great, thank you. All right, the next is, on our agenda is item number twenty-five.
Do I have that one too?
No, that's me. No. And Cosmos Corner, KNRM Enterprise LLC and Nelson Industries LLC. It's a modification of conditions in five-oh-three, five-oh-five, five-oh-seven, five-eleven Central Drive in the Beach District. Is there a representative for this today? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Nicole Sinkavage from Cosmos Corner. I'm the applicant, and we appreciate being put on the consent agenda today.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this being put on the consent agenda today? Hearing none, Commissioner Klein is going to read this into the record for us.
In August two thousand and eight, City Council granted a conditional use permit for a commercial kennel. The applicant is now seeking a modification of conditions to expand the existing twenty-one-hundred-square-foot kennel to a total of eight thousand square feet. The kennel meets the standards, is an allowable light industrial use that is compatible with the Navy easement and surrounding character of the area. Staff recommends approval, and the Commission agrees.
Great, thank you. Chairman, that was the last item on the consent agenda, and I move for approval for items one, two, three, five, six, eight, twelve, thirteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-five.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I need to repeat a disclosure.
As do I.
Pursuant to State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, I have a letter on file making the following declaration. On the July fourteen agenda, items have been financed or may be financed by Town Bank. Those are number four, number six, number eight, number nine, ten, and eleven. As such, I have made this disclosure that I'm on an advisory board of Town Bank, which makes no decisions on loans, and I believe I can participate in this transaction decision fairly objectively in the public interest, and I will participate and vote on these items.
Thank you. Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, while I will support the items on consent, I want to be clear that I am specifically recusing myself by, from Agenda Item Number Eight, Elias Properties. The broker for the owner is a broker in my office with whom I often work and share business with from time to time, and the address is forty-five-twenty-five Main Street, Virginia Beach, Virginia. All this is memorialized in a file, on file with the city attorney. So I will specifically recuse myself from Agenda Item Number Eight.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval for the consent items.
Mr. Edman, are you abstaining from voting on fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen? Which is actually Marlin Bay, Bay Marlin, Marlin Bay, impishore.
Those are deferrals.
That's a deferral.
This is a consent agenda.
Okay, you should have abstained from voting on that one.
No, you know.
Undeferrals.
Undeferrals.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, see, it's skyfalling.
If we could make sure that's in the record. There is a document on record with the clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, circle back around. We have a recommendation for approval on consent items by Mrs. Oliver. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Horsley.
Vote is open. By recorded vote of eight in favor, zero against, with one abstention by Mr. Redmond on Agenda Item Number Eight. Agenda items number one, two, three, five, six, eight, twelve, thirteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-five have been recommended for approval by consent.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone who had an item on the consent agenda. They will be scheduled in the future with City Council, and you will get the date on that. Next, we will move on to the regular items to be heard.
Okay, our first agenda item is Agenda Item Number Four, Bonnie G. Bright Sand Company, an application for modification of conditions on property located at two hundred Princess Sand Road in the Princess Sand District. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please step to the podium?
Welcome, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Harold Jones. I'm with Sigma Environmental, and I represent Bonnie Bright Sand Company this morning. As you're well aware, this application is requesting authorization to expand an existing mine that's been in operation since the late nineteen seventies. This is the most northern portion of the mine. It's going to be about seventeen-point-three acres of expansion, and it's been reviewed by staff, and they have developed some additional conditions for the authorization. We are now at twenty-three individual conditions, some of which have been modified and changed, and I think, believe, three new ones were added since the conditional use was reauthorized for an additional ten years last year in two thousand and twenty. So we are in acceptance of those conditions, and we're working with staff to work out some of the details on a longer groundwater management and recharge plan. So it's been a pleasure working with staff on this particular project. We appreciate it. Any questions?
Questions? Okay. I think we have a speaker, so stand by just in case you want to rebuttal on that one. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have one speaker via Webex, Lisa Clarkson. If you would wait two to three seconds, and then state your name and begin your comments, please.
No other speakers. Mr. Horsley? Do anybody have any questions? No questions, Mr. Horsley? You want to, let me, so we have no more speakers, so we're going to close this and open it up to us up here for-
We would have probably placed this on a consent agenda. We were thinking we were going to have a speaker. But anyway, this pit has been operational, as Mr. Jones said, for forty-plus years, and Mr. Bright has run one of the best pit operations around, and is supplying sand to the City of Virginia Beach and other surrounding areas that's very much needed for us to continue to prosper and develop as we need to be. I think this request for this seventeen-acre expansion is very good, and the conditions, twenty-three conditions, I mean, to keep up with twenty-three conditions, Mr. Jones, you're going to have a job. But anyway, that's what Mr. Bright pays you to do. So we think it's fine. I think it's fine. The people in the area, the rural area, are very appreciative of what Mr. Bright does for the community and all down there, and the supplies that he supplies for when they're needed. So if anybody got any other questions, I don't, I'm going to make a motion for approval.
A motion for approval, no second? Motion for approval by Mr. Horsley, second by Mr. Cosson?
Vote is open. By recorded vote of eight in favor and zero against, Agenda Item Number Four has been recommended for approval.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Redmond?
Before we go on and before I forget, I would like to pose a question to staff that we just encountered. The whole calling in by Webex thing, isn't that sort of horse and buggy now? I mean, I think we're kind of past that phase where we have to have, you know, multiple different kinds of technologies. I mean, this is one instance where it didn't work very well, and for who knows what reason, but it seems to me we're, you know, back at home. You know, if you want to protect yourself, go get a couple shots. I did. It was pretty easy. I don't really see the need to continue that any longer. It just kind of, it's always been somewhat disruptive. And I think from my perspective, can't speak for anybody else, I couldn't hear anybody. When we were sitting over in the convention center and all that stuff, I would kind of like to go ahead and retire that portion of what we do for whomever, you know, gets to make that decision, clearly isn't me, but because I'd have made it already. It just seems to me that's a disruption that we don't need, so for what it's worth.
I understand. Thank you for your input, sir. We're good, okay? I'll let you, y'all discuss that.
You can just sort of sort.
Yes, sir. All right, move on, next item?
Our next agenda items are nine, ten, and eleven, Winners Properties LLC, an application for a conditional rezoning, A-12 Apartment District and B-2 Business District to Conditional B-2 Business District on property located at three forty-nine and three sixty-one Nelms Lane in the Kempsville District.
Welcome, sir. How are you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission for the Record, Billy Garrington, on behalf of the applicant. Also have Mr. Kyle Cortez with Bullcott Rivers with me here in the audience. Mr. Chairman, requested to have in front of you today is for Winners Property LLC, properties located at three forty-nine, three sixty-one on the north side of Nelms Lane. I'm sure most of you by this time have figured out, Winners Property LLC is actually the Checkered Flag Motor Company, which operates in the City of Virginia Beach. Car dealerships spread out all throughout the city, and if you have had a chance to look at one of them or to visit one of them and buy something from them, you will notice that every location they have is well-maintained, well-taken care of, and I think it's a good asset to the City of Virginia Beach. So the request that we have today is for this, this area that you see in blue here, a little bit more than three acres that were, there is a two-step process that we're doing here. Phase one is for an auto storage yard. Bulk storage is probably what the application that we submitted says, because that's what it has to be worded as. Although bulk storage sure doesn't sound like it's very good to a residential neighborhood, but it is bulk storage because you're storing in bulk. We're storing automobiles, is all we're storing. And this is a lot that will be used in conjunction with a new Audi dealership that just got approved on the northeast corner of Nelms Lane in Virginia Beach Boulevard, which will be under construction very soon. Phase two of the request would be for the car wash building that will be placed on the building. And when I say a car wash, everybody thinks that it's a car wash that's going to be like an auto bell or something like that, just for the general public. That is not the case here at all. This car wash that is planned on this piece of property is for their inventory vehicles only. And with regard to that car wash building, there are some new condos that just got built just to the north of this property, and we have worked with your staff extensively. The car wash building will be built with the same building materials, the same color scheme as those condos next door to us, roofing, et cetera. So we worked with your staff on that to make sure that that was something that was agreeable. And Mr. Edman, I heard you bring up a pretty interesting question this morning in regards to the car wash building. That car wash building needs to be relocated. This is what we have come up with, as a relocation for that building, that moves it farther to the south and farther to the west, and gets it much closer to the Boulevard, which is the commercial corridor on this piece of property, than where it was originally designed all the way back on the north side of the property. So we would like to move it even closer to the Boulevard, but Mr. Edman, the problem we have with that is, is that the front part of this property is still owned by Haynes Furniture, and we only have a lease. So we can't build it on their property when we have a stipulation that if they ever need that property back for additional parking, we have to vacate the property immediately. So we've moved it as far south and as far west as we can. With regards to traffic in this area, we think that the request that we are having, that we have put in front of you today, would be far less traffic than if this was developed as residential. I mean, just, you probably wouldn't have ten or fifteen trips a day if you're using it just for a vehicle storage yard. Stormwater treatment will be by underground infiltration system, so you won't have a unsightly BMP retention pond sitting on this piece of property. And with regards to the perimeter landscaping, we have worked with your staff, and we have not only met the requirements for the perimeter landscaping, we have exceeded it. So again, it's our contention that once the landscaping gets mature, which we think will happen pretty soon, it will make it much more agreeable to the surrounding properties that you have around it. So with that in question, we would, with that in mind, we would answer any questions that you may have, any suggestions that you may have. In the staff write-up, there are eight conditions for the storage yard and six for the car wash. We're in agreement with all those conditions, with the exception, if you don't mind, the condition number eight with the storage yard says we have to vacate that interior lot line, and again, that can't be done. So other than that part of that condition, we're in total agreement with it, but that lot line can't be vacated, because that's still the property that's owned by Haynes Furniture. So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, if anybody has any questions. We understand the neighbor's concern about having a residential zoning in your area, but unfortunately, the only way we can have a storage yard there is to zone it commercial, which is the reason why we did conditional B-2 zoning, because we're telling you, and we're telling them, you're not going to wake up one day and there's going to be a gas station there. You're not going to wake up and there's going to be a fast-food restaurant there. This is the only use that can be on that property based upon this conditional B-2 zoning to make it more agreeable to the neighbors. So I appreciate you taking our time to hear us, and we'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? All right, let's listen to the speakers. Hold on a second, I'm sorry.
Could you be more descriptive about the landscaping and how it has been enhanced over what was required?
I think the minimum requirement is a ten-foot landscaping buffer, and I think our buffer is twenty feet, which we have exceeded, made it bigger and wider around the perimeter of the property, and we have a six-foot privacy fence. Is it six or eight?
The requirement for bulk storage yard is a fifteen-feet-wide landscape buffer with a six-feet privacy fence.
A six-foot privacy?
Six feet.
And what's that fence made out of? Is there a material specified?
I don't think the material has been specified, Mr. Edman.
It's not in the write-up.
Okay. And as far as the height of the plantings, the one, it looks like there's several types of plantings going in this fifteen-foot strip.
This is the category five, if I'm not mistaken.
Six.
It's a category six.
Category six, which grows to a much higher height than the other ones do.
Green shrubs or a combination- Uh, great myrtles, great myrtles in here. I'm having a hard time reading the-
It's pretty small for a-
All right, that's all I got.
Okay. All right, let's listen to the speakers and then, all right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chair, we have two speakers that will be speaking together, and they're representing the Garnet Point Lake Condo Association, Janice Figueroa and Maureen Jacques.
Welcome, ladies. Please state your name again for the record.
Good afternoon. I'm Maureen Jacques. I'm the Vice President of the Garnet Point Lake Condo Association.
I'm Janice Figueroa Lopez. I am the President of the Association.
Okay.
We thank you very much for hearing us today. We're not used to public speaking, so we're a little nervous, and I'll try not to go like a freight train. As we stated, we're on the board of the Garnet Point Lake Condo Association, and we're here speaking in opposition to the Winners LLC checkered flag proposition and rezoning. And we do concur with your staff, the recommendation that the rezoning not be approved, and the conditional use permit not be issued. The residential area that would be affected by this rezoning consists of over two hundred residences in eight separate areas. Nelms Lane is a narrow road that is the sole entrance and egress- Nelms Lane is a narrow road that is the sole entrance and egress to our neighborhood, but this road is also used by walkers, joggers, parents pushing strollers, kids on bikes, folks walking dogs, and school buses picking up and dropping off children. One such bus stop is at the entrance to Atkins Reserve, which is right across the proposed emergency exit for the storage lot. The primary entrance proposed for the storage lot is across from a HUD and what we know as a Habitat for Humanity housing area. How will those huge tractor trailers maneuver down our small, narrow lane and negotiate into the driveway? Also, I'm going to extemporaneously question the lighting situation. As we reviewed the plans, we noticed what we thought were almost 40 lights ranging at 15 feet tall with a downward direction. So if you have a six-foot fence with plantings and 15-feet light numbering 40, that's going to look like a football field over there. Currently on the corner, as we have heard, Checkered Flag is in the process of putting in a new Audi dealership. Currently, they are storing cars on that lot and their employees park there. We understand that the new dealership will need the new storage lot. Where are those employees going to park? Are they going to park in the new storage lot? We really don't want a B-2 zoning approved. We wish to remain a community, pretty much shielded from all the hustle and bustle on Virginia Beach Boulevard. We do have an abundance of green space, mature trees, bushes, and wildlife. Please keep our zoning A-12. Thank you, Janice.
Dear members of the Virginia Beach Commission, I apologize because not only am I nervous, but English is my second language. I will try to speak slowly. My name, as she stated, is Janice Figueroa. I reside at Garnet Point Lake Condos, located near this proposed area referred to be rezoned. Like Maureen and I, like Maureen stated, I am the President of the Condo Association. I have been a resident of Virginia Beach for over 30 years and have owned several properties. I purchased this property five years ago. When I went shopping for a home, this was the first property I saw in the area and fell in love with it. I liked it so much that I consciously made an offer higher than the bank assessed market value because I knew this would become my dream home. All this was before the current real estate search. I know this area very well as I pass by it almost every day. I walk from and to work, I walk the area to exercise, and walk out my dog. This vicinity area is enclosed, meaning that there is only one entrance and one exit on a small two-lane road. It feels safe and secure at all times, day and night. This is like a hidden gem for all residents. There is a playground at Grand Lake, one of the eight neighborhoods back there, and other than that, there is no other open space in that area. The landing question is the place where people and nature meet. This is like a mini forest where you will see baby hawks, bald eagles, red foxes, numerous bunnies, and a variety of songbirds. It is also the place in which you will see a father teaching football to his son, two children selling lemonade to help themselves and their parents, a man on a wheelchair interacting with his trained dogs, people picking wild blackberries, neighbors from different neighborhoods meeting each other. Needless to say, we are all from different economic backgrounds. We know this area is not ours and that it will eventually be developed. We also recognize its owners have the right to develop it. However, in my opinion, the subject combined parcels are better suited for a residential development than for commercial. We could only hope that the city would preserve it or create a park that did not affect the trees as part of the city's community plan for a sustainable future. One of the things this plan states is, and I quote, "We are a model community of great places, both man-made and natural, that are inherently beautiful and are accessible to all, rich in cultural, educational, and recreational opportunities with ample choices regardless of age, physical limitations, or income, and recognizable with unique character. Our urban and suburban communities feature a range of housing choices accommodating a diverse community like we are. Integrated with natural, open space, and places of historical and cultural significance. Farmland remains abundant in the southern part of the city, and every resident has access to fresh local foods." We need a natural area here. Without this open space, we wouldn't have any other space within walking distance. Rezoning this land for, this land of natural beauty to accommodate a commercial development will be detrimental to our community and other communities nearby because it would simply open the door not only for the now-proposed business, but also to some other incompatible land use in the future. All this being said, we at Garnet Point Lake Condos strongly oppose this rezoning application and kindly ask the Virginia Beach Planning Commission to reject this request. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be heard.
May I state one more thing because you have on your map.
You have 10 minutes, so you can.
I'm sorry.
You have, till the lights go off, so you have time.
Thank you. On the map, to the right, upper right corner where the blue is, you see that? Thank you, Janice.
There's a pointer right here on the, on the, in front of you?
Oh.
Doesn't work?
Go to the right, Janice. No, we're the, yes. In there is now built, doesn't show it on this map, but there are 21 brand-new townhomes that have been built by Bouchard, and they started at $300,000 and went upwards closer $400,000. So that was an enhancement for our neighborhood, so it is not a vacant space over there.
Also, we are also concerned about this.
Ma'am, ma'am, can you come back to the podium, please? So we can hear you, we just want to hear you.
I wanted to point, and I'm going to speak about this this year. Okay? Sorry.
No problem.
We are also concerned about that space because everything is going to be blocked, and that small space there will become a dump site or some sort of an unsafe space because it's going to be surrounded by, by walls, there's going to be, it is to us, it's also a safety, it would be a safety hazard.
We thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Any questions, Mr. Revan?
Yes, would you take a moment, please, and just point out on that aerial, if we can see it, where your residences are located?
Where we live?
Yes, where do you live?
I don't think we're on there, Janice.
Yeah, when we go here, Garnet Point Road at the end, right there.
We're up on, if you look at the, up at the far right where it looks green, that is a lake, I believe, and if you go up past that, where our condos are on the other side of Garnet Point Road, we're up on Witch Duck Lake or Garnet Lake or, it's got a lot of different names, but that's where we live. So we access to ours through there.
Yeah, there's eight neighborhoods, and ours is the very last. So we enter, we, we only have one entrance. So we enter through Nelms Lane, go around Garnet Road, and at the end, that's where we are at.
And we're only 16 units up there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Questions? Okay, thank you, thank you, ladies. Any others?
No more speakers.
All speakers, Mr. Garrington?
I thank you very much, and, and I would like to point out also, she talked about the condominiums that have just been built by Mr. Bouchard. We have a letter of support from Mr. Bouchard because he looked at our request and he was in, he was not in opposition to it, he was in support of it because of the landscaping and because of the design that we have done with the car, with the car wash building. With regards to tractor-trailer trucks, there's no tractor-trailer going to be in this parking lot, okay? No tractor-trailer is going to try and get down that two-lane Nelms Lane to get back there and offload the cars. The cars will be offloaded on the new dealership that's going to be built on Virginia Beach Boulevard. And with regards to the traffic, people bicycle-riding, roller-skating, whatever, you're going to have far less traffic on that road as a result of this request than you would if you had 30 or 40 new condos built back there. So with regard to the light poles, there is a condition in the staff write-up that we can only have light poles that are 14 feet high, they have to be directed inward so that it doesn't illuminate the property outside of it. When we go through detailed site plan review, that is always looked at by your staff, and again, it's not going to be lit up 24 hours a day, and it's not going to look like a football field. So I apologize for us putting you in the position that you're in to where you have to decide between who's right and who's wrong, but unfortunately, this is the only place we have to come in order to get this approved. We have tried to be as respectful as we can to the surrounding properties. We've tried to work with your staff and come up with some guidelines that we think will be agreeable to you, and then the, the conditions that are in the staff write-up, with that one condition, where we just ask you not to make us vacate that lot line, we're in a total agreement with what your staff has required us to do.
Any questions, Mrs. Oliver?
Mr. Garrington, the, I guess, the, the, the back half of that, where, where butts against Garnet Point Lane.
Yes, ma'am.
And Nelms Lane, it's just sort of interchanged there. There are basically three houses that butt up against it on the, on the Google Maps. Did anybody have any conversations with those?
We tried to meet with, with the people, and they said, "Look, there's no sense in us meeting with you, there's nothing you can say that's going to change our mind." So, but we did offer to, to meet with them before we got here to show them what we were asking for and, and see if they had any suggestions that we could incorporate into it, and they just didn't want to meet.
And the two buildings across the street, they almost, they're two large buildings. I'm not quite sure what those are.
Heard them say one of them was the Habitat for Humanity. I don't know what the other one is.
All right, and so, and then Mr. Bouchard has already written a letter on the townhouses that don't show on that one vacant lot.
He has given us a letter of support based upon the landscaping and the fact that we incorporated the materials and the color schemes that he used on his project in our car wash building, and we're now moving it even farther away from, from his project.
And the lighting, you said not 24 hours? It's just?
Nobody lights up a, nobody lights up a car dealer 24 hours a day. At nighttime, after nine o'clock, all you have is security lights to turn on, and all the rest of the lights go off, and it's just for security purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Klein?
Excuse me, could you use the pointer and show me where those apartments are now on the map? Because the, the site plan looks like you guys are right up in that corner.
Do you have a pointer that works?
Probably not for five years now.
You talking about the new apartment?
Yeah, the site plan looks like the, your lot goes all the way up into the corner of Nelms and Garnet.
Sort.
Turtle Creek, thank you.
Does that make it, is that white portion?
It looks like.
The new apartments, Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
This piece of property that you see right here?
Yes.
Is the ones that Steve Bouchard, Bouchard's brother?
I see, okay.
Just developed, and he gave us a letter of support.
That's where they are. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Revan?
Mr. Garrington, can you point out where that car dealership is going?
The new Audi dealership?
The new car dealership goes right here.
That's what I figured.
That would be the new Audi, it originally was going to be Jaguar Land Rover. Jaguar Land Rover was put up at Kings Grant and, and Virginia Beach Boulevard, so now Audi's going here on that northeast corner, and this will be just a overflow lot for their inventories for that, for that dealership.
Thanks.
I thank you very much, and again, we apologize for putting you in this position.
Other questions? All right, thank you, sir. All the speakers, we're going to close this and open it up for discussion.
I have, I need to inquire of the.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Could one of the ladies who spoke come back up for a minute? I need to ask you a question. The question is, what is the exact name of your condominium?
Garnet Lake, Garnet Lake Point Condos.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to close this and open it up for discussion? Anyway.
Chairman, I won't be participating in any further and not have a conflict of interest.
Well, these are individual.
That's condo association I represent, my firm represents, so.
Okay.
I'm out.
I, I have a, I do have a question for the Civically, have one question. Where are your condos? If you don't mind coming up here?
Can you show you?
No, I have them, I just want them to answer the question.
Okay. Can you go back to the picture that, okay, there you go.
Thank you.
The pointer up there works now, on the pointer?
Can you zoom out a little bit on that photo for me?
Ma'am, the pointer on the, on the, on the, right there.
Carolyn.
It's a static map, that's, you can't pull out.
It's okay, he zoomed out good enough.
That's where we are, yeah.
You're.
Right on the lake.
Okay, and can you, can you sort of circle where Garnet Lake condos is?
Yeah, exactly, that's it, that's right there where she's pointing at. It's not on the map because the lake is over there. We are on the lake.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
And I am surprised that you haven't received any other, because we have spoken to other people that supposedly were going to speak against.
No, I got it.
And they were at Bouchard, some of the owners.
Okay.
Because Bouchard doesn't own it anymore.
Right, thank you. Okay, so we've opened it up for us to discuss. Who wants to go? Did you ever hear him, Mr. Revan?
Yes, I did. I don't particularly care for this application in the sense that, I mean, I would just kind of prefer apartments or condos on a site that's zoned for multifamily as it is. It's very hard to rezone things to multifamily these days because most people think they're getting a casino or something oddly. Here's an instance where some folks think it would be better to have, you know, something that would fit in an A-12 zoning designation, and, and I, and I agree with that. I personally think it would be better if it were residential. Nevertheless, it seems to me a perfectly appropriate use for this piece of land. There's a giant furniture store right next door to it, it's associated with an existing or soon-to-be car facility. You're, I mean, I can throw a baseball and hit Virginia Beach Boulevard, so it's hardly nestled back in the, you know, in the farthest reaches of things. I just don't find enough wrong with it that would cause me to think that it's not an appropriate use of this land. And I might prefer something else, but I think there's a certain private property interest where unless something is just kind of wrong or doesn't really meet certain minimum standards, it seems to me you ought to be able to make some choices about how you use your own land and what commercial uses might apply, and a residential is a commercial use in many ways. So, I mean, that's a long way of saying I, I, I'm going to support the application. I would prefer that it be a different product, but I don't think there's anything wrong with this product, and it strikes me as entirely reasonable and appropriate, an application in this spot. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ah, yes.
Where'd the attorney go?
Billy.
Mr. Garrington, do you want to, do you have a question for Mr. Garrington?
Yes.
Can you come back up, Mr. Garrington, please?
Does y'all's, does y'all's property for the dealership join the A-12 property anyplace?
No, sir.
Alongside?
Okay. Here's the property that we have right here now, and then you, here's the other property. But the front portion of it is the part that's owned by Haynes Furniture that we're only leasing. That's the part that we don't own.
Okay, so you can't, you can't get there from there?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else? Mrs. Klein?
I appreciate what they're trying to do. I think that the level of traffic is going to be minimal as an overflow lot, and I think that that is a great place for it. At the same time, we're constantly talking about how we don't have enough space for housing, and this area is beautiful green space, and I would prefer to save it for housing than to develop it since it is not just a vacant area, it's a green space. So I'll be voting against it.
Okay. Anybody else? George?
I'm going to just say, I, I'm okay with it. I mean, I appreciate the enhanced landscape buffer. I checked out the car wash that's existing off of Rosemont Road, couldn't hear anything. I saw the whole landscaping that he had on site. You, you really couldn't see the cars, and the adjacent. And the adjacent, one of the adjacent property owners is more or less sending his approval for it. The individuals up front, it looks like they're about maybe 1,000, 2,000 feet away from this property. I haven't heard anything from any other adjacent property owners, so I'm going to support it.
Okay. Else, anybody?
I think, to be honest to me, when you put the other picture back up there, I think it, the property fits more in the commercial area than it does residential area. To me, it does, with the big, big box of Hanes and all right beside it. With the way they buffered it from the residential area, I think it's, and I don't think it's going to create traffic down Nelms Road. I don't see that. They don't drive new cars up and down the road there. They'll unload and put them in the parking lot till they, till they're sold. So I'm, you know, I'm supportive of the idea.
Ms. Oliver?
I will, I do know the applicant's checkered flag, and I know how they, how they operate their businesses. And the one thing I can honestly say about them and their family is that they've lived in this area for generations, and they run and operate businesses, they excel at what they do. And when they say they're going to do something, they do it. Their word is just as old-fashioned as everything. And if they, they keep everything neat and tidy, and they will protect the neighborhood and go above and beyond basically what is written. They always have, and they always will. They are, they are one fine family of a family-run business for generations. And so I can't speak highly enough about them and the way they conduct business and in this, in the community. So I will support them.
Okay. I just want to say a couple of things real quick, this, since this is the Kempso area. One of the couple of things that I really like, what the applicant said, that the lights are not going to be on 24/7. There's just going to be security lights after a certain time. And we know for a fact that tractor trailers are not going to pull down Nelms Lane to block school buses, to block anything. And I'm, I'm pretty sure, in fact, I'm positive, that this is going to be even less traffic than any type of residential use on that property. So I'm going to be supporting it also. Saying that, anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the application, but with striking condition number eight about vacating internal outlines.
Second. Did you want to say anything?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, if I can, the applicant provided a plan noting that the building would be moved as well. We should probably include in the motion if the commission chooses to, to utilize this layout, which moves the car wash facility to the south.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application, however, deleting condition number eight and including therein the new site plan showing relocation of the car wash facility to the more central location within the lot.
All right, we have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tom.
We have a second by Mr. Akraz.
Vote is open.
You didn't get it.
Mr. Edman?
I'm trying to abstain, but it's not working.
Button's not working.
Okay, hang on, bear with us. Okay, can we do that again? Vote is open.
Not the rust off this place.
Okay, all right. By recorded vote of six in favor, one against, and one abstention, agenda items number nine, 10, and 11 have been recommended for approval with modifications or removal of condition number eight and including the new site plan.
Thank you. All right, on the next item?
Our next items are agenda items number 21 and 22. Robert Nelson et al., an application for a subdivision variance, section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, and a floodplain variance, section 4.10 of the floodplain ordinance on a vacant parcel on West Landing Road approximately 5,998 feet west of West Neck Road in the Prince of Anne District.
Pam, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Bradon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing the family members whose family had owned this piece of property for 50 years plus, as well as Frank and Debbie Mason, who are contractually under contract to purchase the property subject to the lot being recorded by a plat. Whitney McNamara has done, and Bobby and the staff done an excellent job with this application. You all have seen applications similar to it. More, more often than not, they don't involve a floodplain situation, but that's come before this commission as well. The lot was created, the parcel was created in 1972. It met all of the required dimensional aspects in the AG zoning district at the time it was created. And, but for the October 2001 adoption of the floodplain ordinance subject to special rules, for lack of a better way to put it, in October 2001, it would still meet every dimensional requirement. And as the staff report indicates, physically, it's high and dry, but it is, a good portion of it is in the floodplain, subject to special restrictions. The reason we're here is because the lot was created by deed rather than by plat. There was a, it was divided into two pieces, the other piece was on a plat, and this was remainder, but they didn't show it on the plat. But it met the requirements, just as the piece that it was divided into two met the requirements of the code at the time. And it's been taxed and has a G-PIN ever since. And so I'm just asking that the commission approve the variance that's required today to record the plat. And then, secondly, there's a plan to build on pilings a house, so it won't be a situation where it could flood, minimal filling, no trees being taken down whatsoever. The, the end of West Landing Road, there's a little hamlet down there with a number of houses, and the, the folks in that little area have no objections whatsoever to this. My understanding is that they're, the same person who signed up to speak against Mr. Bright's burr pit is the person who signed up to speak on this, doesn't live in, in the area where this is located. And all the conditions that have been recommended are acceptable to my clients, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Bradon?
Mr. Bradon, am I correct saying if this had been recorded, it wouldn't, you wouldn't be here?
We wouldn't be here, they just, they didn't put plat record, and that happened all the time between the late 50s up until the mid 70s. And we, this commission and city council have seen these cleanups, they come along sometimes in bunches, sometimes. There aren't many left at this point, but this is one of those, because the same family has owned this parcel for all these years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there had only been one speaker signed up, it was Lisa Clarkson, and she emailed us to withdraw her desire to speak.
All right, move on. So we're going to close this and open it. Mr. Horsley?
Mr. Bradon said it's kind of a housekeeping thing, we need to make, make this legal because it wasn't recorded back, back then. We have a lot of these down in the rural area that lots were created by deed, but they weren't recorded. So I make a motion the application be approved.
Motion for approval by Mr. Horsley, second.
Second.
By Mr. Redmond?
The vote's open. By recorded vote of eight in favor, zero against, agenda items number 21 and 22 have been recommended for approval.
Thank you. All right, on to the item 23.
Yes, sir, our last agenda item for today, number 23, Jeff Heightcamp, an application for a conditional use permit, home occupation, retail sales, firearms on property located at 1140 Cordova Court in the Prince of Anne District. The applicant or the applicant's representative, please step forward.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name's Jeff Heightcamp, and I am the applicant and resident at 1140 Cordova Court.
Okay.
I'd like to establish two things today, hopefully, is one, answer any questions you may have.
Excuse me, Mr. Heightcamp, we're having trouble with our sound system today, do you mind speaking up some? I'm having a hard time.
Sure, two things I'd like to do today, one is answer any questions you may have, and also hopefully try to ease the fears of some of my neighbors who are in attendance that are in opposition. I've limited time to reach out to all of them, but I did contact some and tried to explain what my wife and I would like to do with the permit in the house. One of the things, obviously, that's paramount is safety. We are very conscious of safety, not only in our own home, but for the neighborhood. So everything we do will be in complete compliance with all the local ordinances, laws, both state, federal, and everything. So we're compliant 100%. We realize that the neighbors have a concern about traffic, and we've tried to relay that, the fact that we will not be increasing traffic in the neighborhood because we're going to limit the amount of gun transfers that we would do in a month. I believe on the application we put four. So, you know, roughly one a week is what we're looking at as far as a, any type of traffic in the neighborhood. We would definitely limit that to hours of the day that are conducive to business, eight to five. And these people that we're dealing with are not going to be, they're not going to be open to the public, put it that way. We're not going to be advertising to anyone, just anyone, they're going to be people we know, people we vet, friends and family that we have in the law enforcement, military communities. So those are the people that we want to start with initially. And then, in the future, our plans are to get a storefront, get an off-site location, it would be a commercial location. But those are the things that we wanted to help our neighbors understand, that we're not going to try to do anything that would have people come in all hours of the night, have increased traffic, especially with children in the area, or firearms in general. I know a lot of times when people hear that, it's a negative connotation, but, but there's definitely a way to do it safely. And I believe that not only FFL, but most law-abiding gun owners are the most responsible in the country. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
What is your firearms background?
So I worked for the better part of 13 years overseas in support of Department of Defense and Department of State contracts. I was in security and security operations over there. So I've held firearms, carried them, not only for my protection, but protection of US citizens abroad. And I have a pretty good background with them. I've taught both my sons at a young age how to respect them, how to use them safely. And so I've worked for security companies in, in the industry as well.
Any other questions? I want you to do something for me, for your neighbors' sake and for the public. Go, start off in the beginning, because we've never really done this before, exactly what you're doing, how you're going about doing it, how you're getting these people's names and so forth, so people understand what you're doing. Because I know it's gun sales, but with that word you just said, gun transfer, is more likely what you're doing. It's not really 100% gun sales. And then go into what's actually recommended by you, by the FFL? Is it, yeah, what's recommended, how much, because this is a very tight, regulated business.
Very.
And just go into that a little bit for your neighbors, so they know what's going on.
Yeah, the, so, one of the conditional, once the conditional use permit, if it's, if it's approved and granted, then the City of Virginia Beach Police Department comes out to do a security assessment. That's one of the things that we have to comply with. And then we also have an interview with an ATF agent. So a federal agent will come, we've been in communication with him over the course of the entire application process. And they have a very regulated, regimented interview process that they conduct that's exactly the same across the country for all applicants of FFL licenses. I believe it's 88 pages long. So it's pretty, it's pretty inclusive, it's very in-depth, they do background checks. I've had a security clearance for quite a while, up to the point of a top secret. So they do their own security clearance or background checks as well as, and the local police department. So there's a lot of vetting that goes along, and everything's recorded. Every transaction has to be recorded because the ATF can come in at any time and ask for those records and documents. And you have to make sure that that's very well, you know, your attention to detail there.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir, let's listen to the speakers.
Mr. Chair, we have four speakers. Brian Fields, followed by Jeff Pilgrim. Brian Fields?
Please come forward, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Brian Fields, and I live on Cordova Court. And my wife and I live on Cordova Court with our young children and are not in support of firearm sales from the residents of 1140 Cordova Court. Regardless of the number of transactions or type of clientele, there are a number of risks that would be introduced which do not, that do not exist today, including an increased, increased traffic to the neighborhood on a dead-end street where my little kids ride their bikes, and where they, where my daughter learned to ride her bicycle for the first time. It's on a little cold effect on that thing. And, and a new risk of crime or robbery as a result of firearms being associated with the residents via the FFL. The risk to safety threatening life and property, the introduction of hazardous material and toxins to the neighborhood, the negative impact to the desirability and value of the surrounding properties, the increased probability of fire given the introduction of volatile materials in a heavily wooded area. Finally, the following of acquisitions of permits and the initial required safety requirements and checks, there are not regulations in place that are rigorous or frequent in order to ensure compliance through the duration of the business in the residence. For these reasons, we believe that this business is better suited for a commercial location and is not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you for taking the time and to, these risks into consideration, continuing to uphold the safety, quality, and character of Lagamar. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pilgrim, followed by Betty Plamquist?
Good afternoon, sir.
Mr. Pilgrim, I live at 2200 Zia Drive in Lagamar, and I'm opposed to selling firearms in a residential section of Lagamar. Firearms sales would deviate from the provisions of residential zoning. Nearly every day, individuals being killed or maimed by intentional or random shootings. Drive-by shootings is a phrase used by the media to describe the killings. Radio and TV has stories every day about shootings or somebody getting shot. Last week, a 10-year-old picked up a loaded gun from inside his house and shot a friend. Last March, two individuals were killed and eight individuals were injured in the oceanfront of Virginia Beach. Tragedy follows gun possession. We remember very well the mass tragedy in Building 2 of Municipal Center when 12 people were killed and four people were injured. Within 10 miles of Cordova Court, there are two businesses selling firearms in commercial areas across from Oceana Commissary and beyond Hooters on General Booth. There are no reliable count on the number of firearms in Virginia Beach. But with the advent of shootings that take place every day, it would be an injustice to our citizens' livelihood to authorize a source that would introduce more firearms. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Betty Plamquist, followed by Megan Zasuski?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Betty Plamquist. I'm a neighbor. First, I'd like to say that they're good neighbors. I live right next door, actually 20 feet away from them. I'm not against firearms. I feel strongly that a business selling, transfer firearms doesn't belong 20 feet away from my home. The property line is 10 feet from my house, theirs look the same. My property value may also be affected. From the first email, March the 11th, which I didn't get a copy, friends gave it to me because my name wasn't on the list that they had, I understand, I understood the business was engraving on firearms. Now finding that the machine needs ventilation for possible toxic air and makes noise, that may not be part of the business. I can't see a way to enlarge their house to accommodate this. Only firearms are left. If FFL approves their house, the address is made public, I understand. Who will be at the house when they go away for a few weeks, months at a time? Safety is very important for our 35 homes, that their clients must pass coming and going after turning off Camino Real. There's no other way out. I asked, I asked the, yeah, I asked them to explore connecting with an established business until they have the funds and the clientele to open their own business. I also ask the applicants if their relatives wanted to move next- I also ask the applicants if their relatives wanted to move next to a house that's F F L approved, would they say you may want to think secondly, so that couldn't hamper my selling the house? I just ask them to please think of others. There's plenty of other places that they could have this business in a commercial setting that are safer. That's my whole opinion. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Megan Zasuski.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Please say your name for the record.
My name is Megan Zasuski. I'm speaking in opposition to the C E P request for sale and transfer of customized firearms. My husband and I live on this, have lived on this street for eight years and are the parents to two children, ages five and three. We play on the road with Brian's kids all the time. We couldn't have selected a better community to raise our family in. And my biggest issue with the application is the impact it'll have on neighborhood safety. I'm greatly concerned about traffic. The staff notes listed a recommendation of four sales per month, but this does not equate to four additional vehicles on our street. Based on our discussion with the applicants, they're planning on providing customized engraving or firearms. This means at least one consultation visit, one visit to drop off the firearm in person, and one visit to pick it up again. They stated they need the F F L because the engraving will require the weapon to be held for more than twenty-four hours. This means at a minimum, there'll be three trips per sale per month. And although this may seem insignificant to staff, the design of our street is very unsafe. The current minimum centerline radius requirement for a minor street is a hundred and twenty-five feet. Our street has approximately seventy-five foot centerline radius. There's extremely poor visibility as you enter and exit the road, which is made more unsafe by the fact that vehicles have to share the roadway with pedestrians. The older section of Lagamar does not have any sidewalks, so when running, walking, or biking, which we do daily, is at risk around the blind curve. Unfortunately, you can't see what's coming around the curve until you're in the middle of turning. And although residents who frequent this road are aware of the turn, it can easily be mismaneuvered by unaware drivers. I understand that the street was designed under older requirements based on the age of our subdivision, but what is currently in unsafe condition will only be made worse by commercial customers who don't have the same vested interest in our neighborhood. We also live at a dead-end street, meaning that these commercial customers will encounter the turn twice for every visit they make. I asked how the proposed sale quantities are enforced, and was told by the staff planner, it's up to the applicant themselves to limit their sales, and then reliant on the neighbors to report excessive cars. The system seems inherently flawed and unrealistic. In addition, having an F F L associated with a residential address opens up the potential for theft and robbery. I understand they're planning to keep it limited, a limited inventory on hand, but just the assumption that they have firearms poses a risk for crime. Lastly, I firmly believe that adding a commercial business to a residential neighborhood adversely affects and changes the character of the neighborhood, similar to the addition of short-term rentals. We live in one of the oldest, most established neighborhoods in Virginia Beach. We specifically chose Lagamar and our dead-end street as a place to raise our family. The addition of the C E P will not enhance the neighborhood, as stated in the staff notes. We already have a great place to live. The only thing that needs to happen is to maintain the fact that it's only residential. The applicants are very kind people. They're extremely smart. We wish them tons of success in their new business. We just ask this be done in a more appropriate, more safe, commercial location. Thank you for your time.
I have a question.
Yes, question.
If the, if one of your neighbors was selling jewelry, or foods, or anything else on the street, the expectation would be that there were increased volume of traffic?
Yes.
And it's my understanding we cannot regulate firearm sales, so we have to view this as a retail business?
Yes.
So, if your neighbor was instead selling jewelry or operating a daycare, how would your thoughts be the same or different?
My thoughts would be exactly the same. I mean, I wish you could see the blind curve entering our roadway. It's a hazard every single day. So, I don't think any commercial business should be done on a residential street, especially one with a poor design like ours.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Sir, that's the last speaker, correct?
Correct.
Would you like to come back up for rebuttal?
So, yes, after listening to those in opposition duly noted all of their concerns, I would respectfully disagree with a few. The storage of hazardous chemicals and materials, I'm not storing any materials or hazardous waste. I've had my own personal firearms there for a while, in a safe, obviously, and I don't anticipate having any large volume of firearms there, above and beyond that. Maybe one or two, and they can also be parts. They don't have to be complete firearms. As far as the traffic's concerned, I have the ability to, to go ahead, and if I have a client or a customer, I can go to them, retrieve the part that they'd like to modify or, you know, customize, bring it back to my house, and then again, return it to them. So, the increase of traffic there would not be anything more than my own personal driving back and forth in the neighborhood. I do understand the long-term effects of a possible home value devaluation or valuation, depending on how that goes with the license. That's why our long-term plan is to move it. We do not intend this to be a, you know, and I say long-term, definitely less than, you know, three to five years at the most. I mean, I wouldn't even see it going that far before we can move into a different venue.
Okay. Any questions?
I do, just some general questions. So, maybe I missed it. Excuse myself for a minute. But when a part, or a gun, or whatever you have is being delivered, is that being delivered by a mail carrier, or are you picking it up, or someone bringing it to you? How's that work?
It could be all three. If it was an online purchase, then yes, it could be delivered via UPS, or FedEx, or the postal service.
And you have that regularly down your street?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
For others?
And Amazon.
And just a general question, I mean, I have a gun. I didn't want one. My dad made me get one, so I got one. So, just curious, if I was to want to sell it, what do I have? I'm just asking. And I'll tell you why. What do I have to go through to sell it to somebody?
Well, the laws, you can, you can do a person-to-person sale. Obviously, every state's different. In Virginia, I'd have to look at the details of if you wanted to do an individual-to-individual. You can take it to an F F L. They can sell that for you if you prefer.
But if a friend comes to my house and wants to buy my gun?
You can, you can write up a receipt and do a transaction and do it yourself.
That's all I have. No, I'll tell you why when he's done.
Any other questions?
So, you, you will do basically order. Somebody tells you they want a gun, certain gun that you, they want to get, and you, you will order it and then just transfer it to them? That's, that what you, is that the type thing you?
Almost. They would, they would order and pay for it, but they would have to list an F F L to send it to, correct?
Send it to you to?
Correct.
For the transaction. So, really, the safety part is kind of a moot issue, it looks to me like.
Yes, and like I said, all, everything that will be coming to me, whether limited basis, will be stored in a safe. And again, the police department's gonna do a security assessment on that, as well as the A T F.
I mean, the other people in the neighborhood could have more guns in their homes than you do. And nobody knows about it right now.
That's true.
So, the, and the traffic issue, I mean, that's, you know, it's more delivery trucks that go up and down the road every day. You know, everybody's buying stuff online now, so it's delivery truck after delivery truck making drops to people's homes. I would, nobody would think that you, that would be more of a concern than the traffic that you're gonna generate. But I, would you say, I don't, you probably wouldn't generate more than one vehicle a day, probably.
Yeah, for myself, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yes, yes, myself and my wife.
And that would be a max, because you're not planning on moving but one gun a week, something like that.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Alright, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No more speakers. We're gonna close this and open it up for us. Before we do that, Mrs. Wilson, can you give us our little spiel on firearms?
The Commonwealth of Virginia is the, is the entity that regulates firearms. The city has no authority to regulate buying, selling, anything in regard to firearms. The federal A T F and the state of Virginia are the people who regulate firearms. As such, we don't have a, an ability to base our decision on the fact that the sale is of a firearm. We have to call it retail sales, and we do. It is just like selling anything else. We's, what was your example? Jewelry. Jewelry, anything out of your home. It's just a retail sale. You have to look at it as a generic sale in retail and not as a gun sale.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a comment.
Yes.
So, I'm a social worker. I work in mental health. I have a young child who recently learned how to ride his bike, and I took the letters from the neighbors very seriously. I reached out to the staff, Antoinette, and I had her send me information about the similar applications that were submitted, and she was able to go back as far as twenty-fourteen. One, two, three, four. I have only been present for one other of them. Of those four, all were approved by the planning commission, and the city council approved them, except one was withdrawn. I asked Antoinette to let me, to see if there were any complaints from neighbors, because if you don't have any control over, once it's there, you can at least let the city know, hey, it's not working. And she said of all three of the currently active F F Ls that are residential, zero have received any complaints. And so, I, that meant something to me. I, I do hear the concerns of the people that I've had in front of me. I find those, those gentlemen to be of the utmost integrity and people that if there were gonna be firearm sales next to my house, those are the ones that I would want to be in charge of it, because it's not something that, as the commission, we can, we have much control over. So, I did take your concerns very seriously. Based on retail sales only, I intend to approve the application. If there are traffic concerns, I urge you to bring them up to traffic. I've had to do the same thing in my own neighborhood because of safety issues.
Anybody else? George?
Yeah, and the reason I was asking the question, I was just curious, because I know a lot of individuals have guns, and they keep them in their houses, and if they, if they're interested in selling to a friend, it could happen. You never know. But I commend this applicant because he wants to do a lawful application to do it. He wants to get security clearance to do it. He wants to vet the customers. He wants to have a secure place to do the transaction. And not only that, he's, he's very familiar with, with the arms. And having said that, I'm very comfortable in, you know, approving it also.
Anyone else? Mr. Horsley?
I make a motion we approve the application.
Motion for approval by Mr. Horsley. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Redmond.
Vote's open. Mr. Edmond, okay. By recorded vote of eight in favor, zero against, agenda item number twenty-three has been recommended for approval.
Thank you. Any other business? Any new business, any old business? Mr. Badon, we're good?
Just stay tuned. There should be a workshop on the last portion of the short-term rental ordinance that needs to be heard. I'll more than likely be presenting to council to vet through the changes to section two forty-one. So, just stay tuned for August.
Alright, thank you, sir.
You're talking about a council, council workshop.
Yes. Not for you guys.
Council workshop, not us, not us.
It was a thirty-item agenda.
We are adjourned.
And we finished before two.